I would like to ask our guests, our Girl Scouts, if they would like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. You ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
Thank you very much, Scouts. And since you're here, we will have you be our first agenda item. So we're going to move you, let's see, right here. Some of you want to speak about turtle crossing signs? So who would like to come up to the podium and tell us about the girl? Now, there's a microphone right there. And if you can just tell us who you are.
My name's Abby.
Just with Girl Scout troop.
Okay, so Girl Scout troop number? What's your troop number?
12959.
That's a long number.
Thank you for having us tonight. We are fifth graders at Memorial Elementary School here in Newton. Girl Scout troop 12959. We have come tonight to request the placement of these two turtle crossing signs on Smith Corner Road in the vicinity of Kenwood Drive. As part of our animal habitat badge work, last year we studied turtles and their habitats.
Could we get you a little closer to the microphone? Thank you.
Did you know that there are seven species of turtles that are considered native to New Hampshire? These include the blending turtle, the spotted turtle, wood turtle, eastern box turtle, common musk turtle, painted turtle, and the snapping turtle. Photos of these turtles can be found in the article. Here's a copy of those interested. The first four of these turtles are New Hampshire endangered, threatened or special concern, and were identified as species in the greatest need of conservancy in New Hampshire Wildlife Action Plan.
Last year, we had a turtle rehabilitator visit us with us and showed us two turtles. She was nursing back to health after being struck by cars, a blending turtle and a wood turtle. It was fun to watch them walk across the art room at Memorial. She taught us that getting hit by cars and the loss of their habitat are the two most common threats to turtles in our community.
So what can we do to help? During nesting season, turtles leave the wetlands and streams to head to higher ground. They can travel far and most often, they have to cross a road. These signs can help remind drivers to be aware and hopefully slow down and avoid turtles as they are crossing our roadways. We have observed turtles crossing Smith's Corner near the wetland area by Kenwood Drive and would like to request permission to install these signs. Can you please help us? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, since we're looking at posting signs on the roadways, could we get some input from our road agent?
So we don't... You're pro turtle? Is this what you're telling me? You're pro turtle?
All right, so you're good with the idea? Have you Scouts spoken to the road agent about where exactly you would place them on the road?
Yeah, they just said that Kenwood Drive, right?
Near, I mean, is it going on a tree, on a pole? So you're going to put it up for them? All right. So I would entertain a motion to authorize?
So authorize the placing of the turtle crossing signs?
I'll second.
All right. And just for clarification, that's we're authorizing the placement of two turtle crossing signs on Smith Corner Road near Kenwood Drive. Anybody have any other questions or concerns?
Just a comment. I noticed the back of the sign is plain. The Girl Scouts may want to put some sort of information on there about when they're being placed and the troop number and what have you. So that in the future, somebody knows where or not these signs come from, you guys write a form.
That's a nice idea. Yeah, on the back of them. Decal kind of thing. There you go. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? As I suspected, none.
I have one other question for the road agent. Do we have non-scripted? Those signs are adorable. I can picture somebody wanting it for their...
Oh, really?
Those are non-revocable?
Right.
Yes, anti... All right, well, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming in.
Thank you, good job.
Good job. And the turtles thank you too.
Thanks for waiting for us too.
All right, so we are on to our next item.
Want to see if they would like to leave?
Oh. Well, I figured they would just leave if they were ready.
You have to escape for the next three hours.
You don't have to stay.
You can leave or you can stay and learn some more about...
Michael will show you how to leave.
All right, so on to our next agenda.
Second.
All right, that was seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That's unanimous. So now, our next agenda item. Fire rescue station sprinkler system update. Do we have one?
Mike Pivero, construction manager, Newton Fire Rescue. We got an email and a phone call today from Carter Sprinkling and Jeff saying by next week, they should have the complete design done. So that means we'll know calcs, costs. Everything should be complete by next week.
Excellent, that's good news.
That's what they told me today.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
So just kind of very ballpark, broad strokes here. Are we thinking if the designs are approved and the finances are approved, that we'd be able to start work over there sometime in the spring?
Yeah, it'll be weather driven at that point, but yeah. I need to know those calcs and I've been waiting for quite a while so we can order in advanced tanks.
Right.
That's my big variable. But we should be able to do that.
Yes, because didn't you say that would take like eight to 10 weeks to get in potentially?
It'll depend on what the gallons is. I won't even know until I see what they have for gallons.
All right. Anybody else? Thank you.
Just so you know, that I did put this on the agenda for your March 3rd. They will be here to present it to you.
Excellent. Thank you. All right.
Will we know gallon size, March 3rd, out of curiosity?
Yes. Complete design, the whole thing.
Our next item. We have quotes for floor maintenance at the police and fire station.
If that can be tabled, I spoke with my partner in blue, the police chief. He's working on trying to get a better quote.
Okay. No problem. Consider it tabled. Moving on, we are going to the next item, which is e-ticket slash e-crash safety grant agreements.
Board, Mike Jewett, police chief. I believe you should have it in front of you, which is, I think we need a signature spot for myself and for the chair. I'm not sure if there's any questions on the e-ticket or e-grant.
It's for $4,000.
Now, is this a match grant?
No. That's what they're going to fund on it.
Excellent.
And the purpose of that is to give the frontline cruisers to have printers in them, bringing us up to the 21st century. So when they write a ticket, they hit enter, send it in, and it goes to the courthouse, it goes where it needs to go. Same thing with the crash with motor vehicle accidents. That stuff will all be done and sent directly to the state so we don't have to mail it to them anymore or do anything.
Now, is this the same docu-sign? Electronic document?
No. Totally different.
Okay, because I received a request to sign sign electronically and I can't sign anything without board approval.
That's the saying that they did, that's the...
You may.
It's up here too.
I would move to authorize the chair's the grant application on behalf of the board.
Oh, chief, I do have that one. Yes. I was just seeing if it was the same thing that I received via email, requesting a signature.
No. You just had some work, some software installed at the station?
So because it's not, let's finish this item first, okay? So we have a grant, so it's being paid in full by the grant, correct?
Correct.
So a motion to sign?
I have a motion, I second.
So moved by Jim, seconded by Larry. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so I will sign that for you. Anyone put a pin? Do you remember what the other thing was, Diane?
Yes. It's, they installed some software over at the police station to get things started.
Oh yeah, and it was confirmation that the work was completed.
That's what you need to sign.
Was the work completed?
What was the software?
It said, that's a call.
That one, yes, it was also.
Hang on. Block five.
Yes, that's all set.
Okay, so if I could get a motion from the board to sign?
Okay, I don't think you need one, but...
I don't sign anything without the board's approval.
All right.
I'm going to authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the board.
Second the motion.
All right, any questions, concerns?
Is that block five?
Yes.
Okay.
The block five completion document. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. I will docu-sign that and send it back. Our next item. Exterior doors for police station and rental unit.
So if I did my homework correctly, hopefully you guys have the quotes in front of you. I went for three quotes on the doors because of the amount of money that it was. I got two quotes back in a timely fashion. The third company, as to date, has not given it back. Those doors were to replace the exterior doors at the police station and also the rental unit that the town has upstairs. To change them from having those wood doors there to put them to a steel door that open out per code so they open out instead of into the building. It's not a residence, so they should be opening out. It also addresses some safety issues that we have.
The mic closer to you, that's better, thank you. And has everyone had a chance to look at those quotes?
So without kind of naming names here, there's a discrepancy between the two quotes.
I would go with the cheaper one. And the cheaper one, what that is, and I think the reason why that one is cheaper is that company actually manufactures the doors themselves. So that's why I think there's such a substantial cost savings.
There you go. I just wanted to know, you know, I always lean towards the cheaper, but I wanted to make sure there was a reason why.
The only thing that I saw as I was sitting downstairs reviewing that is the very bottom line in that quotation. Installation adds 1,700, so I'm not sure what that is. So I would ask that if this got approved, not to exceed $6,811 until I can figure out what that is.
And option one?
Does the other quote include installation?
Yeah.
Okay, so this one we have to add $1,700 to.
So it should come out to, if I use my fingers correctly, it should be 6,811.
68 versus 78, so it's, well, 800 less.
Yeah, so...
6,800 is what?
Yeah, 6,811.
But what's option one?
That's what I didn't understand. That's why I'm going to have to call them, but I just to...
It would put the quotes a little closer together, so...
But looking over the quote, I guess that must be for the materials on the top and then installation would be the bottom number, which is the way they wrote it up. I just caught it out of the corner of my eye, it didn't look right, so. Like I said, so we don't have to come back if this does get approved. If we could put it out to 6,811, not to exceed.
I kind of leaned towards the Newton Company. I'm wondering if we give you a budget like you're asking for, can you negotiate further to see what happens? So I would move to fund the replacement of the exterior PD building doors at $6,800. What is it, 11?
6,811.
And 11.
We're up to...
Not to, let me change that, not to exceed $6,811.
All right, any further questions?
Yes.
No, Kate already seconded. That's why I asked if there were any questions. So chief, your question?
Do you want me to go back to both companies and see who would give us the better of the deal? Or is there one that you wanted me to see if they would give us a better deal?
So if it's just me talking, I would go to the Newton Company and say, this is what you've been approved.
Yeah, so the board is authorizing you to spend $6,811. Now, if you would prefer to do business with a local company, as we like to do, then it gives you that opportunity to go to the local company and say, can you work with this number?
If not, then I'll go to the other one.
Exactly.
Okay, I just want to make, I just want clarity.
But if installation is...
So that's the plan.
Thank you.
But if installation is strangely included with a way lower bid, then that's another story.
But it's not, it clearly says, add this amount for installation. So installation is optional. You can just get the doors and install it yourself.
You can do that.
Or you pay $1,700 more and they'll install it for you.
And that sentence simply says $1,700 for installation. It doesn't say whether or not that's true or not?
It says add. It says installation, add 1,700.
With option one, whatever that is.
Which I don't know what the option is. So I want to call them. Maybe that's not even part of it, I don't know.
You have some flexibility, so.
Because there's the turtle there.
I think what we need to make clear though, this would come out of general government and buildings. Is that our intention?
Or it could come out of that fund that we have. The capital building.
Engineering and renovations.
Yes, that one.
So I would move, I don't know, if you want to make it another motion or add to my motion to come out of the capital reserve fund for Ait Merrack Road.
So that's an amendment?
An amendment.
Okay, and Kate, you second the amendment?
Larry did.
Oh, that was Larry's second? Larry, you second that amendment?
Yes.
All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, unanimous.
One question. Do we have to have a public hearing through the draw from the cabinet?
No, you have the agents.
All right, our next item. Chief, don't go anywhere. Our next item is speed limit for safety complex.
Yes, please.
Do we need a speed limit in a parking lot?
Yeah, it'd be a great idea. So this comes up for a couple of different reasons. And I think part of that, that should have been on the agenda, was signage. Again, I had it in the last few days. I had somebody back over the gravel section from the PD parking lot, over the gravel section, over the hill, across the grass, and then just took off at the bottom. There is a stop line there now. And I'll talk about the stop sign first. I'd love to add a stop sign to the bottom. I don't know if that needs to go to a public hearing to add that in there, if it was going to be enforced if we wrote somebody a ticket for it. But we have, currently there's a stop line there. So I think we need a stop sign. A speed limit sign, you know, there's cars in and out of there all day long. And it's not, there's nothing posted and, you know, you get speeds that range from, you know, 5 miles an hour to 30 miles an hour. So it's like, which, what's the happy medium? I looked at it the other day, I watched cars come up and down, either a 10 or 15 mile an hour speed limit sign, just to slow cars down, just so that we're all on the same page. But the part that I'm struggling with the most is, it's just the public coming up that doesn't know where to go. That's probably the third car in the last two months that's driven over the gravel section. Come springtime, we're going to have a major issue with that. I'm assuming it's going to thaw out, it's going to be a little bit muddy and we're going to get cars that are stuck. I just don't think people realize that's not part of the parking lot. So I was looking for some signage. We need to do something up there before someone drives just off the grass, off the front.
Okay, and can our road agent recommend what would be appropriate? Not just speed limit, but what kind of signage or barriers or whatever, you know, what would be the best approach to address the people crossing over where they shouldn't be crossing over?
Because the thing is, I think if the Warren article is successful and once the sprinkler system is done, we kind of want to invest in repaving the rest of Ait Merrack Road so it's all level and stuff.
Absolutely. I'm just looking for something in the meantime.
Right. We probably wouldn't want to do anything permanent until we get to that point, right?
And I don't want to put up like a chain going across it on a couple of fence posts with the plowing and stuff like that. I think it'd be a little bit of an issue.
About one of those snow fences, the orange?
That would look beautiful.
Well, I mean temporarily.
Yeah, it's definitely needs some type of signage.
If we do end up with a new sign down there for the safety complex, at that point, the two existing signs can be moved to their respective buildings. So somebody pulling in, I mean, quite honestly, when one building is red, you kind of assume that's the fire station.
I guess...
I'm not going to paint you a blue, but...
No, and I guess what I'm looking for is more so when you're coming up the driveway, do you, is there a sign with an arrow that says PD's this way, fire's this way, you know, civil construction this way? Right now, I've got two blue light bulbs on the front of the building from at nighttime, looks fantastic. You can tell that it's a PD. They're on 24/7. My door, the glass door going in, has Newton Police in block lettering on it, but when the sun's on it, you can't see it. So it's kind of, I mean granted, yeah, the fire station is red, you know it's there. The PD, you can see the blue lights, it's fantastic. But I think we need some type of signage to point people, you know, harking this way.
I agree.
Something like that. I'm not looking to, you know, spend thousands of dollars on signs, but just something up there that we can, you know, it kind of shows where to go.
And?
I agree, you need directional signs when you get in the parking lot. It's not uncommon. And yeah, the building's red, that's not helping. You would think it would, it's not helping. Yeah, so I mean, one arrow that says Fire Department Street, one going to the right says PD and public parking in that one area. And like the chief said, you don't need a lot of signs, but you need a couple with some arrows that just directionally send them in one direction. I mean, it's pretty simple. I wouldn't do anything elaborate because the project's not done and we have no idea when it's going to be done.
So would you be willing to take on the task of
Of what?
Getting the appropriate sign?
The air in the headlights.
You've got to say no. There's somebody keeps saying, I've got to say no. Is that you?
I just like the person who knows what they need to be the one to actually get it.
I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll work with the police chief and we'll get it done.
That works? Everyone else in agreement with that?
Yeah. I don't, I don't think we're going to do any sort of a Band-Aid type thing at this point, right? I mean, it's not worth investing in until we know what, you know...
The directional sign will continue to be used regardless. Fire station, straight ahead. Police station, right.
If they change its location on the site.
But it would still be the same because it says people are coming in knowing which direction they got to go. So I can see that sign being a permanent sign, even after we repave. We're still going to use that sign.
Yeah, I just wouldn't want to put it somewhere where we think it's going to be permanent. And then we finish the project, we pave, and then realize we have to move it.
Yeah, I mean, they'll be relocated at some point. We'll put them where they work for now.
I'm good with that.
What budget?
What do these things go for?
What, how mu, say it again?
What do they go for?
Cost associated.
Oh, I don't know, but between the posts and the signs, what are we thinking, three fives? Yeah, you're probably going to be about $500 or $600 for the three signs. And then you still need a stop sign at the bottom.
I think the Ait Merrack Road Capital Reserve.
Right, so...
That's what it's for.
I will move to authorize the road agent and the two chiefs to collaborate and expend not to exceed $800.
I'll second.
All right, seconded by Matt. Any further questions, concerns?
Is that for the speed limit signs too?
All signage.
For all signage?
Okay.
Yep. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And chief, if you want to just say, do what you want to do to them so you don't have...
I have a question for the police chief. Just to say, I can tell you this is a red building. You have no idea how many times the street's going in the red building.
Oh, I believe it. Not everybody knows, not everybody knows red is fire, blue is police. You would think they do, but...
Do the trucks give it away, like when they come in?
So before we conclude on the signage, my belief is, and somebody prove me or tell me that I'm wrong, to enforce a speed limit sign, it has to be a public hearing.
I believe so.
So however, I don't know this to be a fact, but maybe somebody could call. Because we're talking about a parking lot, I think that's a different, different issue. I know you're talking about the public hearing for a street.
To enforce a speed limit though, I don't think it's enforceable.
To give a ticket or something, I think you've got a, I don't know.
Right. So we could put the sign up, I think, but for the enforcement aspect, maybe that's the public hearing. We should get our info.
Regardless, let's get the sign in and going.
Yeah.
Because people see the sign. If they don't pay attention to this video, they're not going to know whether or not it's been enforceable or not and they're apt to slow down. Those who disregard... People who disregard speed limit signs don't care if it's enforceable or not.
Hopefully, it just, it slows them down. They see it.
Exactly. So it, it, it's just a reminder that they want to go slower, at the very minimum. We'll worry about enforcement and after we get the sign up. How's that?
And before the sign is up completely, the Board of Selectmen can have a public hearing to declare that a... But first, we have to find out from council if parking, if we have jurisdiction over parking lot.
Speed bumps, would those ever be an option?
Speed bumps would be fantastic.
If we're, if we're paving.
I don't think they...
Trucks would love them.
Not, not for you? Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, our apparatus wouldn't like those. So, not a good idea. All right, thank you. Our next item. That took care of C and D, so we're good there. Next item is Chief Alcindino, removal of Facebook posting.
Good evening. I, I just have a quick question of the board. I've talked to the board several times past year or so in regards to Facebook postings, about myself, I got tough skin, the road agent, we know he's got tough skin, my members, the Fire Department, et cetera, et cetera. And the board stated that there's a policy that the board does not get anything with social media. I was quite upset when my father-in-law's obituary was posted all over social media in something that the board technically did. The board is who voted to purchase the radio. My name was on it was because it was coming out of my budget. I did ask the board in regards to a little bit of help in that matter, and I was told the board does not get involved in social media. I was informed a couple of weeks ago, and the gentleman that talked to me isn't here today, so if the board wants to table this to the next meeting, we can table it. I don't have a problem, so I can bring the gentleman up. But it's a town resident, I won't say his name because he's not here. Town resident posted some stuff, mentioned members of the Board of Selectmen, and it was taken down. From what he explained to me, and like I said, he's not here. I don't want to technically speak for him, but he said the selectmen contacted the admins and had it taken down.
Who is the selectmen? All five?
He's not here.
I didn't.
What?
He's not here, so I don't want to put words in the gentleman's mouth. I'm just gonna say the Board of Selectmen. I view it, no disrespect.
And you know my feeling when you say the Board of Selectmen. It's, if it's individuals, it's individuals. Don't blame the board, and I tell you that right now.
And I agree with that statement. However...
I agree with you 100%, but no disrespect to any of you five. I look at it as, if one board member's doing it, it represents the five. Just like I'm responsible...
Absolutely not.
Just like I'm responsible for 26 members of that Fire Department for their actions. Trust me when I tell you, I wish the gentleman was here. He told me he was gonna be here. That's why I asked for it to go this way, because I was gonna have him explain what he explained to me. In respect for him, he's not here, so I won't mention his name. But I'm just here to find out if there is such a policy. Because we've also been in non-public...
The Board of Selectmen do not get involved in removal of other people's posts.
I didn't, when I approached, like I said, I got tough skin. When it came for my father-in-law, not only did I ask for the board, for a little support from the board, I also asked, because the board could have straightened that out in 30 seconds in a public meeting. The ex-chairman of the board knew exactly what I was talking about. The ex-board member, Mr. Donovan, knew exactly what I was talking about. I just trying to figure this out, because I wish he was here, and we'll, can have this discussion at another time when he is here, and he can fill the board in with the individuals, because he had all the information from who the board members were. And it's not only that. We've had conversations in non-public, and within 12 hours, it's on Facebook. I'm a little lost on that one, so I am standing here today asking the Board of Selectmen, is there a policy, or is it individual, on how each member feels? If their name is singled out, they will respond. Just asking.
So let's cut to the chase here, because it wasn't me either. I, I read all that stuff. I'll go on record. I read every single word, but I never respond, and I, I never get involved with any of that stuff. So, I don't know. That's me.
I don't know what post we're talking about.
Well, any, any post.
Who made a phone call?
I think what the chief's asking is...
I didn't see any posts.
We do, we have a social media policy, but it doesn't reference any of this sort of stuff.
Right. Now, no member of the board, and I've posted this particular information on Facebook, no single member of the board speaks for the board on social media.
Or anywhere else.
Okay, so, just for me.
Number one.
Go ahead.
Okay. Number two, me personally, there are sometimes questions asked of selectmen or of the members of the group that, being a selectman, I may have the answers to, which are public information. Those I will provide the public information without the opinion.
Okay.
The only posts I have ever requested be removed, and I think there were only two at any given point in time in my 10 years on Facebook, were to deal with me personally as an individual, not as a selectman.
With all due respect, what's the difference? Was it in regards to you sitting in that seat?
No, it had nothing to do with selectmen business or me as a selectman. That's why I said it was personal, not selectman.
Okay, so just for me. So the five of the Board of Selectmen...
Yes.
Are saying publicly that none of yous contacted anyone on Facebook to have a post removed that included their names. Just so I know.
Correct. I, I am one of those that said, "No." I did not do that.
I didn't.
Or did I?
Matt didn't.
I don't know what post we're talking about.
And Jim, you're a no also?
I would definitely...
All right, so you have five members of the board saying they did not.
Okay.
What was the post? What was it about?
So you have a source that gave you this information that's not appearing here tonight, right?
It ended up going through the Fire Department.
Yep.
First.
Yep.
So I believe nothing what I hear, half of what I see.
Right.
I confronted the individual with a couple of other members.
Yep.
He stated the whole thing, chapter and verse, the email he received, the board, the individuals on the board, individuals or individual on the board, who made the request to have the post out.
To the, who did he make it, to the admin, or?
Made it to the admin. Because not only did he say that, half, he also said that he was banned from the Facebook police for 10 days. So I will personally go see him tomorrow. He's on my list to go see him tomorrow, and him and I will have a man-to-man conversation.
Now, admins cannot ban, I mean, they can't...
They can lock you out.
They can if you go against policy.
They can lock you out of a group, yes, but not off of Facebook.
No.
Can I just jump in here with one key bit of information? These are not, even though they say Newton, none of those pages, not a single page out there is part of the Newton Town Hall. They, what happens is individuals get together, they start these pages, so they become the admins. We have no control as a board, or really anybody in here, of any of those.
Correct. That's why, again, with all the garbage that was put on, the only thing I really was upset with, with the board, was, because they could have solved that like this with my father-in-law in a public meeting. They didn't have to go on Facebook. So to find out from what this gentleman said, and trust me, if, if he's a man of his word, like he says he is, I will be back in front of the five of yous.
Okay.
Okay? Because, like I said, to me, it's a shame that the board couldn't even clear that up on an individual's that deceased. Okay? And I do agree with you, Mr. Foote, and I disagree with you. I know each one of yous are individuals. Again, I look at yous as all five. If one of yous is doing it, it represents all five of yous.
So you're, you're saying that there was a post at one point that...
Disagree.
That was of a personal nature, correct? Your father's...
Father-in-law, yes, it was.
And did you request from the page admin to have that comment or post removed?
Actually, I'm not. On Facebook, my wife did, and she was banned. That's why I turned to the Board of Selectmen and asked for a little bit of help, a little bit of courtesy, a little professionalism. Okay? I'm gonna take a breath, because I am gonna call that individual when I get out of here, because somebody is slinging something back and forth. Okay? That's why I asked the five of yous on the record. Okay? And I know, I want to single, I know Larry's upset, because Larry knows exactly what I'm talking about. Okay? Not to single out Larry, but again, it's the whole board. It's the whole board. He wasn't there with me when I talked to the individual, so he was not there, but he, I'm sure he heard the scuttlebutt at the fire station.
Madam Chairman, first of all, I do very little on Facebook. I'm in one forum, and if it's the person whose name you brought to my attention, that person has been posting misinformation on an, on one of the other Newton forums fairly continuously in a fairly lengthy posting that has been shown up this past week. I will speak to you after the meeting if you want to hang around for a couple of minutes, and double confirm that the... But that person has been deliberately slamming obit, obit urals at people around. But I, there are certain examples of misinformation that person has posted. I only, I only post on Facebook when somebody asks a direct question that needs a factual answer.
We're gonna meet on Thursday anyways. I just asked a simple question.
Okay.
That's all I did, and I received from the board that the board answers questions, that they do not respond to if there's an attack on them. Okay? So I just, okay, so I understand what you're saying, Jim. Believe me, I understand what you're saying. And yes, it was that individual that you and I talked about, and it was that incident that you and I talked about. So I have it from the five. That's it. That's all I wanted.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would just say to the other aspect of this, how you're talking about, basically, basically, somebody was, was posting somebody, something derogatory about a vote we took in this room for a piece of equipment that we're buying used, right? I think, do you remember the total on this? It was a radio, right?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, so it was a radio. It was presented to us in this room as a savings...
In a public meeting.
In a public meeting, as a savings, and the board voted, I'm gonna guess, five to zero, to...
Purchase.
To purchase this, and one of the reasons I voted for it was because it was a cost savings for the town, and we voted that way. I don't recall, you can prove me wrong, you can go in the minutes. I don't ever recall anyone coming forward in a public meeting and calling us on that vote, and if there was a, if they saw a problem with that vote, I don't recall any sort of correspondence, a letter, an email, or whatever. I basically think they just looked at Facebook, or not looked at, they went to Facebook and they decided to make that an issue there, and we've said it before here 100 times, that's not an official means of communication. We have telephones, we have emails, we have US Mail, we have meetings you can come to. If anybody has any problems with anything we vote for in here, that's the way to get in touch with us. We're not using social media as an official means of communication.
100% correct. That's why I came to the board and asked for a little bit of support.
Yeah.
And I was told, "There's a policy. We don't respond. Put a fork in it. It's a done." So that's why I'm a little upset that I find out, and I will talk to the individual. Because what he just told me, either he's full of you-know-what, or no disrespect, one of my bosses is sitting up there trying to... That's all, that's it. That's all I'm gonna say.
Well, since we don't know the individual, I will say that he is likely mistaken.
But we'll find out.
Okay. All right, thank you, Chief. We will go on to our next item, continuation Town Hall Security and Fire Alarm Systems upgrades.
So you had put a, didn't want to do anything until you got some more information, so...
So do we need to table this to the next one?
No.
Oh, okay.
I thought we were...
We're gonna bring you up to date.
Thank you. Okay.
So we have, you asked about getting the two security team to do the fire and the security system at the Town Hall. There is a five-year contract that we signed with the fire alarm monitoring people. So to get out of that would be expensive. I think you have to pay like 90% of what they would have lost. So it's not worth it. The security system, you can still go with the other, the other people if you want. You asked, Jim asked about the fire, that it was in the, in the security team that says that it monitored fire. It does not. There is a button there that you can go to the panel and press, and that will signal, you can say, you know, there's a fire. So it's not monitoring the fire. You're not doing two different things.
Which one's that?
That's the security system, okay?
That's in there now?
No.
That, this is the contract that we were looking at at our last meeting.
Correct.
And the board had questions and asked Diane to get the answers to.
Chief, can you stand up to the podium, please? You, the white shirt chief, please. Yes, sir. So I don't know, did, did you just hear what Diane said, what, what the, the system they have? Is the system they have now, or is that the one they want to put in?
The one we want to put in.
That the security system they have will, will have fire with it, but you have to go up to the panel and push the button.
It doesn't monitor for fire. It's not a fire system.
Never heard of a system like that. So after hours, it wouldn't trigger if the smoke detectors went off or anything.
No, that's why you have the fire alarm company. There's two different companies.
There's two different monitoring systems.
Panic button.
But they do have, panic buttons are different from fire alarm system.
Right, that's what we're talking...
That's what we're trying to tell you.
Yeah, apples and oranges.
He said, "Push the button for fire."
No, what I said is, Jim asked in the last meeting, because he saw on the quote that it had a fire monitor.
Right.
It does not have a fire monitor. He says there is a button, if you were, to go to the panel and you could push, but that, it does not monitor it. The fire alarm system that we have monitors for fire.
So what we want for Town Hall, and hopefully for the Police Department, is, is a combination of burglar and fire all-in-one system with one monitoring company.
Which Diane just started with, saying, "We are already locked into a five-year contract."
With the fire alarm.
Only with this building.
Correct, and the library.
How much longer on the, so...
Five years.
From today?
Five years.
This just started in January.
Just started when, January?
I mean, does that make sense to you guys, to have the combination in one panel?
If you could.
I'll speak for my half. It doesn't make sense, the town of Newton having two different contractors doing the same thing.
Well, they're not technically doing the same thing. One is the panic button, and one is fire.
The two different, two different...
I understand that. The panic button, throw aside, that's my brother over here in blue. But did I hear the board correct, did you guys sign a five-year contract for somebody to do the fire alarm?
Yeah.
Yes, to monitor the fire alarm. That is correct.
Which is totally different than the two companies that are gonna do the police and fire. This, I just want to clear it up. After the board said something a while back, they want to have everybody, one company do both departments, I mean, do the entire town.
We couldn't.
That was after they signed the five-year contract.
Yeah, we, we, we signed this contract a couple of months ago.
And the contract is just for monitoring?
Correct.
Just to monitor fire?
Right.
That is correct.
They are the same ones that we have had monitoring.
Ten years.
For the past 10 years.
Who does the service?
The same company.
J and M, eh?
Contract signed for the service.
Correct, the same company.
How many years is the contract?
Five years.
Okay, then I have to ask the board. When I asked the board a couple of months ago to sign and extend the contract with the security team for the fire station, I was told you can't extend it more than a year. with the security team for the fire station, I was told you can't extend it more than a year. So, I'm being told, standing here now, you extended the one for the...
Now, there is an escape clause in the contract that allows us to break the contract if our proposed budget does not pass.
All due respect, that's not my point. My point is, the board told the fire chief, when he asked the question, to save the fire chief from standing in this podium every year for the board to vote, to have the security team, which is the company, come in and service and test the fire alarm system at the fire station. Can we do this once and get it done for a few years? And you guys said, "No." Now, I'm standing here, and you guys are saying, "No, well, we can do it, because we did it for us." I'm not being disrespectful here, but I'm, I'm getting lost. I am truly getting lost.
I don't remember the meeting, but I think the escape clause probably was mentioned when we, we did the five years. So, the question is, what options do we have if we want to have them both on there? Do we have to wait five years?
Yes, because the escape clause only is viable if our budget does not pass.
Which could happen.
Which could happen.
Yep.
And I was just standing up, because I think there was a question on the panel, if there was a fire, ambulance, and police button. That's on the security portion of it, that it's, it's called the Gemini. It's the same one that we have at the PD. There's a little blue shield. If you hit it, it calls the police. There's a red shield, it calls the fire department. Well, it calls central dispatch, and they dispatch it out. I just wanted to clarify that, that that's part of the alarm, burglar alarm system. I don't know if that helps or not.
And what we are discussing right now is an upgrade to the existing system, so it uses cellular communications instead of hard-wired communications, because apparently there's some issues with blips using the landlines, correct?
Right. If the phones go down, we have no coverage.
Exactly. And that's why we're looking at the upgrade, so that we have coverage even if there is no phone service.
But he already did that last Friday, right?
Are we talking the fire alarm now?
It says fire alarm, yeah.
It's all under the same thing.
That's what he did last Friday, so this has already done this work.
This is Security and Fire Alarm Systems Upgrades.
The fire alarm, he has put in the cellular radio.
Right.
The problem with that is, the fire alarm panel needs to be tied into its own dedicated electric circuit, power circuit. We have electrician that is, he's on a trip, so he can't come. But when he gets here, he will run a new wire, new power line to it, and put it on its own breaker. That will take care of the fire alarm portion. The security system, you haven't done anything with at this point. You have the quote, but you wanted to table it so I could give you these answers, which I've given, I believe, right?
The security system is only a push button.
That's panic button.
It's not if somebody breaks the glass, the burglar...
That's correct. They're just push panic buttons.
Okay.
Yeah, because it says there is a button on the main panel that can be pressed to indicate fire issue.
Yeah.
It's usually wired is more secure than wireless. That's why people have it. I'm surprised that...
They're all going wireless now.
There's a yearly cost to monitor the security system.
Oh, radio boxes, yeah.
And then there's the upgrading the fire alarm system. Again, a yearly cost. And do we have all these agreements?
Are you on the fire alarm?
I'm on all of them. They all have an annual cost.
Yes, they do.
And are they all multi-year, and do they all have escape clauses?
And is that it?
I'm sorry, I've gone through the contract that we supplied, and I find no escape clause.
What was this thing?
What was that, Jim?
Couldn't hear you.
I've gone through the, the contract that we signed back in December, and I cannot find an escape clause in there.
Well, it's in the default anyway, because we've been with them for 10 years.
So, Chief Alcindino, Chief Alcindino, question for you. What are you looking to do in your building? So, you said you've got a one-year extension in your building.
Yeah, it was a one-year contract. It's done. So, next year, I stand back here, get a hold of the security team.
Right. When you say it's done, when was it done?
It was done Friday, and the paperwork, actually, the paperwork that says what they did and everything is in the bookkeeper's office, because it's the invoice put together.
So, the idea is, we want to get this signed to start up again, right? Because you're basically saying we're not monitored right now?
Yeah.
For the, your building?
Oh, no, my, my building's fine.
Well, that's what I'm asking. What's the status of your building? You're on a one-year contract?
I have no idea on the monitoring. I know on the service side. It's two, it's two different things.
Yep.
Same company.
Yep.
Two different things. One is they come in once a year.
Yep.
They test every smoke detector, every heat detector, every flow switch, you name it. They test the emergency lights, emergency exit lights. What doesn't work, they mark down. What works, and that's it. But they test the entire, they were in there for a few hours on Friday, testing every single device.
So, in a perfect world, and we don't have to mention these company names, which one would you want for the whole town?
I don't think you can do that, because you guys just signed the five...
I'm asking, let's pretend, which one would you like for the whole town?
Personally?
Yeah.
Company?
That you have...
The company that's doing the police department and fire department.
Okay, so the Eight Merrimack Road Company.
Correct.
So, is it possible, can we have a meeting? I know there's contracts and escape clauses and all that stuff. Can we...
Technically, it does have an escape clause.
Let me finish. Can we get a meeting with the vendor, the, and again, we're not mentioning names, but the five-year contract vendor? Have the, if we need both chiefs, have at least one member of the Board of Selectmen, I'm not signing myself up for an extra meeting, but I'll go if I have to, and figure this, figure out what our options are. Because I know what things say, but sometimes there are other options that maybe aren't clear just from the contract language.
The only question I would have, Matt, would be for that five, for that service contract, what exactly they do with, for that service contract?
And that's kind of like why I would want you there, because that's key questions. If it's apples and oranges, in other words, you know? Are we not getting what we need from one and not the other? So, I think we should, should talk to these people. And then come back to the whole board.
So, who's volunteering the selectmen?
I'll go. I'll go.
You're gonna do it?
Matt, we can simplify this. If somebody can just email me the contract you guys signed that says what they do for service, I can look at it in 30 seconds.
Yep.
Tell you, and the individual that you guys hired, from what I talked to him last Thursday, I think it was last Thursday? I could tell you, he's not doing the same thing.
Yep.
Unless it changed in the contract you guys signed.
So, let's get him now to look at. So, I think, what are we, next one is March...
Third.
Third, so we can talk about it on March 3rd.
Okay. So, we're good now?
Guess so.
Mike, are you good?
Well, you should, you should stay. But there's no one here.
All right. So, Diane, are you good? Do you have what you need?
Oh, you just want a meeting with the vendor that's, right now, is doing the fire monitoring only.
Yeah, let's talk tomorrow about specifics, but that's kind of the general idea.
All right. And Matt, you've got the lead on that?
Yep.
Good. Next item, tax collector, yearly contract for property searches?
I will move to authorize the chair to sign the contract for the property searches. Could I just...
Second.
Sanders searches, yeah, Sanders searches, and it's the whole board, not just the chair. I know it says chairman, but...
She, she, I think right there, the yellow post-it on the top, the first page, the yellow...
Yeah, but it also says, signature of officer, signature of officer in office, officer in office, officer in office.
Look at the note she left you on the first page, the very first page, the post-it.
Says, "Need one selectman's signature." But they have room for many.
You don't, yes, but she just says, "All you need is one."
Okay.
Well, I will leave it, and the chair can sign on behalf of the board with Sanders.
Searches.
Yeah, Sanders searches.
Do I have a second?
I already seconded it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item, liquor license request, CDM Duke's Country Store.
I think the board signed one for that same location about a year ago.
Yeah, when it was under different ownership. And this is, this is just stating that the Board of Selectmen has no objection to them obtaining a liquor license. It's not the town authorizing a liquor license, just telling the state liquor commission, "We have no objection." Now, this is a location that has been selling beer and wine for decades. So, I have no...
We're talking 70, 80 years.
Well, that's, that's decades.
Do you guys have to sign it?
So, we do need to sign the letter, yes, everyone.
Move the board to sign the letter regarding Duke's Store of the State.
Second.
Any further question, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And then our next item, review the 2020 Voters Guide.
Let's get that up.
Has everyone had a chance to review?
Yep.
Any feedback on the Voters Guide?
Give my feedback to Diane.
Nancy, you corrected a few things too, so...
All right. Anybody else have anything outstanding they want to provide feedback on?
No.
All right, then we'll move on.
Well done, is what I thought.
Our next item is the HP lease acceptance.
So, we got, if you notice downstairs, we got our PCs. So, now that we've got that, we just have to let them know that, yes, we have received our equipment.
So, it's just a, yep, we got it? There's no signatures or anything like that?
Yeah, I think you have to sign it, Lisa.
Yeah, we got it, so it's good.
Okay, so, authorization from the board?
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes, for the chairman to sign.
Make a motion for the chairman to sign the HP lease.
All right. Larry started the motion first. We'll let him continue.
Motion for the chairman to sign the HP lease acceptance. Is it a number of years or anything? That's all you need?
No, that's just saying we received...
The equipment.
All right. Seconded by Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so I can sign that one? Right. Other business. We do have a few things. Yeah, so one, one just...
I make a motion to sign vendor manifest dated February 18, 2020, in the amount of $853,099.2, of which $777,877 goes towards the Mark's Sanborn Regional School District payment.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to sign payable manifest of pay period February 2nd to the 15, 2020, but the payday of February 20th, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to sign, no, yes, sign Veterans Tax Credit for Tax MAP 13-3-11-13 for tax year 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I move to sign Veterans Tax Credit for Tax MAP 12-2-10 for tax year 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. All right, abatements?
I'm sure I would need the approval of the public and non-public statements dated February 12, 2020.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
That was Kate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I think we're done, or...
We have an announcement?
Oh, yes. We do have one announcement, just to remind everyone. Candidates Night, tomorrow night, 7:00 PM, right here in this location.
Or right here on this channel.
Please come. It's important.
Anything else?
I'm sure I move to one of the...
And that is at 8:27?
Yep, I have a question for you.
All right, we're done.